Good morning and welcome to the February 5, 2020 land use hearing. And first off, I'd like you to please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you want to speak on this matter, you need to fill out a green card out in the hall and give it to Mary. I'll call to the order the February 5, 2020 land use public hearing. And at this hearing, we will consider an application by Cadman Materials, Inc. for the property located generally between South Barlow Road, Highway 99, and Highway 99 near Barlow. The application before us consists of four separate requests. Now suddenly, I'm losing my voice. A post-acknowledgement comprehensive plan amendment to Clockman County's comprehensive plan to designate approximately 99 acres of proposed mining site as a Goal 5 significant material and aggregate resource site. A zoning map amendment to apply a mineral and aggregate overlay to the site. A mineral and aggregate overlay district site plan review for the proposed mining operation, and a modification of existing conditions of approval from planning file number Z0348-93-CP and Z0349-93Z and Z1826-97-MAR to allow processing on Saturday. We will first hear from a staff presentation from senior planner Martha Fritzi. The applicant will have 30 minutes to present. Next, I will open the hearing for public testimony, beginning with public officials, who will have five minutes each. Then representatives from recognized community planning organizations and agencies will have three minutes each. Finally, other people wishing to testify will have three minutes each. The board will then deliberate and either render a decision today or set a time to make a decision at a later date. Assisting us in the hearing today is our county clerk, Mary Rathke. It's changed on here. Senior Planner Martha Fritzi and Assistant County Council Nate Boderman. If you wish to testify, please complete one of the green cards and give it to Mary. If you have prepared a written statement, please give a copy to Mary and use your time to summarize what you have written. Everyone who wishes to speak will have an opportunity to do so. We'll now begin with a hearing with a legal statement by Nate Boderman, followed by staff report by Martha Fritzi.
Thank you. Hey, good morning, everyone. As the chair mentioned, now is the time set for the public hearing for the four previously identified mining-related applications. Because this is a quasi-judicial hearing, that means a couple important things for those wishing to participate today. First, all the criteria that can be used in reaching a decision have been identified in the staff report. And so testimonies, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards the criteria identified in the staff report or other relevant criteria that someone may believe applies to the decision. Accordingly, please direct your testimony to those relevant approval criterion here this morning. Second, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond may preclude appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that particular issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designated respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Once final, these decisions may be appealed to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals. And at this time, I'll ask the Board of Commissioners to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest. Seeing none, if anyone wishes to challenge the impartiality of any commissioner, please indicate your intent to do so here this morning in any written or oral testimony you may provide. And that's it for me. Martha will give the staff's presentation.
Hi, good morning. I am Martha Fritzi, senior planner with the county's Planning and Zoning Division, and I am going to go through the staff report, hopefully at a pretty fast clip. There are a lot of slides. I'm happy to answer questions at the end if you think I've skipped over something that was important for you to hear, or if you have more technical questions that I could possibly answer. So as the chair mentioned, there are four proposals in front of you. Very generally, it is to designate a site as a Goal 5 significant mineral and aggregate resource, to apply a mineral and aggregate overlay on that site, to approve the proposed mining operations, and also there is a modification of conditions proposed that would allow processing on Saturdays. The location is about 3/4 of a mile south of South Highway 99E on the west side of Barlow Road. It includes eight portions of eight tax lots that total 106 acres, although 99 acres is what we're really looking at here as the proposed extraction area. Generally, you'll hear Phase 1, 2, 3, and 4 in this presentation, and it's in your paperwork. Cadman owns and operates some other mining operations, and of course, the processing facility in this general location. To the east of Barlow Road are what are referred to as Phases 1 and 2. That's where the processing facility is. There is a conveyor that goes underneath Barlow Road. On the west side of Barlow Road is Phase 3, which is currently actively being mined. You can see it if you're driving down Highway 99E. Phase 4 is what we're talking about today. It's immediately south of Phase 3. It sort of straddles the property south of Phase 3 in between Highway 99E and South Barlow Road. This is just another picture of what is proposed, and you can see where the culvert is, is where the materials are conveyed from the west side to the east side over to the processing plant. And so an important thing to keep in mind in this proposal is that Phase 4 is proposed as a replacement for Phase 3. And so mining won't happen at the same time once Phase 3 is mined out. They will then move down into Phase 4, assuming everything is approved. And so that would generate no increase in traffic, or loads, or anything like that. It's basically just moving farther south. The proposed mining plan is identified here. It shows the cells. Generally, they would start in the northwest portion of the property, work eastward through the top cell, and then work their way south as mining each area is mined out. And then this is the conceptual reclamation plan. Essentially, because there will be a big pit in the ground, it is a large water feature. There will be some native plantings, and that is generally what it would look like in terms of the elevations. So listed in the Planning Commission staff report are a number of relevant policies and criteria. I am not going to go into a whole lot of detail about every single one of these. You can read them all in the Planning Commission staff report. These are all the relevant policies and criteria that need to be addressed and were addressed both by the applicant and analyzed by staff. So just real quickly in background, this is a natural resource. Statewide planning Goal 5 protects natural resources, and generally, we think about them as things like riparian corridors or wildlife habitat rivers. But mineral and aggregate resources have been identified by the state as an important natural resource. And because of that, there is a specific process outlined in state law that you need to go through in order to determine whether or not this really is a significant Goal 5 resource that warrants protection, just like a riparian corridor or other wildlife habitat. And so this step-by-step procedure is outlined in the administrative rules. I'm going to go through very quickly. It's about 11 steps. The first one is just simply to determine whether or not there's a complete application. There was. An application needs to include things like the conceptual site reclamation plan, which we just saw, a traffic impact assessment, proposals to minimize impacts, potential impacts to surrounding properties, site plans, details about the operation, and an assessment of the quality, quantity, and location of the resource. That is needed in order to determine whether or not the resource that you're, the area that you're looking at does indeed have a significant resource. And under state law, it needs to contain at least 2 million tons of aggregate material. The material needs to be tested to understand if it meets the quality standards. All of this is outlined in the applicant's application. They did do all of the testing. Based on the borings that they've done and the testing that they've done, there are approximately 8 million tons of material underneath the subject site, about close to 9 million tons, which would be available for excavation, based on setbacks, things like that. It is important to note also that this property contains primarily Class 4 soils. This is considered low-value farmland. The next step is to determine what your impact area is. State law does not require you to look past 1,500 feet from the mining area unless there's some sort of factual information that indicates you should do otherwise. There was not that information, and so the applicant analyzed all the properties within 1,500 feet of the subject property. And in there, you identify conflicting uses. Typically, those uses are dust-and-noise-sensitive uses, which would be things like homes and schools and daycares and things like that. As was noted in some of the earlier slides, this area is largely surrounded by other mining operations. There's the canby sand and gravel sites that are northeast of this property. And sort of northeast and east of this property are other mining sites. Across Highway 99E, there are some dwellings. There are some limited rural industrial uses, and there's also agriculture in the impact area. The applicant has identified 20 dwellings within the impact area, and that becomes important because those are really the focus of a lot of the conflict analysis that happens when you need to, when you look at potential impacts of this mine on the sensitive uses in this area. And this is just a map of the impact area, and you can see sort of the variety of uses that are going on in that area. So your conflict analysis is really important. You need to determine whether identified conflicts can be minimized in order to determine whether or not you are going to allow mining on this site. To minimize a conflict, it's important to keep in mind that it doesn't mean there's no impact at all. It means that you are able to reduce a conflict to a level that is no longer significant or to ensure conformance to local, state, or federal standards. So you can mitigate the conflict so that it meets certain standards. For example, one you'll hear about is noise. There is a DEQ noise standard that they are required, excuse me, to not exceed for these sensitive uses. And one way to do that, you, once you do a noise analysis, is you determine whether or not there are actions you can take to minimize impacts so that they fall below that standard, understanding there is still going to be some noise. So noise is one of the first things that is looked at typically in these applications. Noise comes from equipment like rock crushers, things like that. It can come from blasting, although it should be noted that there is no blasting proposed for this particular site. There are impacts potentially from dust and other discharges, diesel, stormwater discharges, and particularly groundwater impacts to wells in the area, water quality, and potentially changes to an aquifer. You also need to look at other Goal 5 resources. In this case, there aren't any within the impact area, just the other mineral and aggregate sites. And then you need to look at impacts to local roads, airports. In this case, they're not close enough for that to be relevant, and then impacts to agricultural operations. This all involves a lot of analysis, which is part of the reason that the binder that I brought over to you was about this thick. There are a lot of experts that have done some background materials. There are a lot of summary findings in the narrative and also in the Planning Commission staff report that finds that all of these potential impacts can be minimized, some with mitigation. And the mitigation is enforced, as it were, through conditions of approval. And so there is a list of proposed conditions of approval that address things like putting up berms and barriers in certain areas to mitigate noise impacts, and certain actions that can be taken to minimize dust. Through all of those mitigation efforts, staff finds that all of the potential conflicts to the noise and dust-sensitive areas in the impact area would therefore be minimized. And I think another important thing that I didn't, that I kind of glossed over is that, and the applicant can explain this possibly in more detail if you have questions. What the applicant is proposing for this site and what is also conditioned in the conditions of approval is that the property, as it's being mined, will only be dewatered down to no more than 10 feet below the current groundwater levels. And then below that, it will be mined in the wet. And the significance of that is that it will potentially create a lot less impact to surrounding wells and to the aquifer. And so once we go through this conflict analysis, if you find that all of the conflicts can indeed be mitigated, excuse me, then mining should be allowed. And if mining is allowed, you move on to the next step. If you decide they can't be mitigated, mining is not allowed, then we're done. The site could still be deemed a significant site. And so because we found that mining should be allowed, we're going to move on. We need, the next step is to determine the post-mining use, and a reclamation plan is required. The thing about the reclamation plan is that ultimately, it's administered through Dogami, the Department of Geology and Mineral Industries, through the state. And so essentially, what we here at the county level are looking at is whether or not the reclamation plan is consistent with the underlying zoning. Nothing is changing with the underlying zoning. It will still be zoned EFU. And so having a natural area with water and plantings is certainly, falls within allowed uses in the EFU zone. And so that's what we are concerned with. There are, also are conditions of approval that the applicant needs to obtain all the appropriate and necessary permits through Dogami, and we get copies of those to ensure that has happened. So then moving on, there's a couple more steps. Once you've determined that this is indeed a significant site, remember I said this is a Goal 5 resource? And once you've determined it's significant enough to be designated as a Goal 5 resource, it too potentially gets protection under state law. So then you need to look at, look back at your impact area and determine whether or not new uses should be allowed within the impact area, or if they should be limited or prohibited. And this is done through an easy analysis. It's an analysis of the economic, energy, social, and environmental impacts potentially from allowing or not allowing uses in the surrounding area. And so you'll notice in the, one of the issues that was brought up at the Planning Commission hearing was the boundary of the mineral and aggregate overlay and whether or not to allow, whether or not to allow uses in that area. And primarily, the reason was the easy analysis had not been done yet. And so the applicant subsequently has submitted that easy analysis and has found through that analysis that there's no need to prohibit or limit new uses within the surrounding area, largely because the area already wouldn't allow new dust-and-noise-sensitive uses because of the way it's zoned, a lot of it's zoned EFU. And so therefore, there's no need to limit uses within the surrounding area moving into the future, and then therefore, there is no need to draw the mineral and aggregate overlay boundary past the subject property at all. I feel like I'm losing you a little bit. We can certainly talk more about this, and I have a map toward the end of this, this presentation. And so finally, the last step is to amend your plan to add this site as a Goal 5, to the Goal 5 inventory of significant sites, which for us is done through Chapter 3. There, it's added to Table 3-2, which was in your packet, and that identifies it as a Goal 5 resource. We amend the zoning map to apply the mineral and aggregate overlay, and in this case, we are proposing to apply it only to the subject properties. And then, of course, there are a number of implementing measures through conditions of approval. They must be clear and objective. All of the conditions of approval were attached to the staff summary. There were some revisions made between the Planning Commission and this, between the Planning Commission hearing and this hearing, and I can discuss those briefly in just a moment. So staff did find that all the relevant criteria were met to amend the comprehensive plan and to apply the mineral and aggregate overlay to this site. So this is the end of the Goal 5 process. The next step, which is the third file that's listed, third file number that's listed in there, is to actually authorize mining. So all that work, those first 10 steps, gets to, yes, you can mine, and yes, this is a significant site. The last step is that the applicant needs to apply for a site plan review, and that's where we apply standards in our own zoning and development ordinance, Section 708 with the mineral aggregate overlay. And that section describes uses that are allowed in the extraction area and various development standards, including screening and noise, hours of operation, things like that. It also requires that they have a reclamation plan, and it goes through several process requirements. And the, everything that the applicant has provided has been found to comply with all of the criteria in Section 708, and so staff also finds that that should be, recommends that that should be approved. Well, I already said that, so we're going to move on. And then finally, the piece about processing on Saturdays. This is kind of an interesting piece. You'll recall in Phase, the Phase 1 property with the processing was east of Barlow Road, and the material is conveyed under Barlow Road and brought to their existing processing facility. So in 1993, that processing facility was approved under those file numbers, and at the time, it only allowed processing on Monday through Friday. And I've read through the findings and the noise analyses, and there doesn't appear to be any findings-based reason that it would necessarily have to be limited to Monday through Friday. Section 708 of our zoning code allows processing on Saturdays, and the DEQ noise standards are the same for Saturday as they are Monday through Friday. And so staff finds no reason to, to limit the processing only to Monday through Friday, and so staff would recommend also approval of changing that condition to allow for the Saturday processing in addition to Monday through Friday. So we had a public hearing in front of the Planning Commission in December. There was one person that testified, and there, but there were two main issues that were raised, and one partially through that testimony, and one is wells and groundwater. There is a Warehouser nursery that is west, southwest of this property, that has a number of agricultural wells. The gentleman from Warehouser who testified expressed some concern about impacts to wells, and the applicant agreed to meet with this gentleman, and I believe some other members of the community. That meeting happened. I was not there. I've been told about it, the meeting happened. And the result of the meeting was that there was a request to change a few of the conditions of approval, which are reflected in the revised conditions of approval that you have in front of you in your packet. Essentially, and they will correct me if I'm wrong, I think, but essentially, it was an agreement to add at least one additional monitoring well to provide the data from the well to Warehouser and any other neighbors who want it a little bit more frequently. And it's outlined specifically the frequency of that. And as far as I know, that was it. There may be something else in there, and my understanding is that there's agreement on these conditions and that both parties feel that things are taken care of. But again, you may hear testimony about that today. I think it's important to note that there are a number of conditions in the conditions of approval relating to wells and potential impacts, including a condition in there that the applicant would have to essentially fix a well if, if something, if due to the mining activities, it was damaged to a point where the person couldn't use it, or there was volume and/or water quality problems. And so there are a number of conditions of approval in there that do relate to these, to these water issues. The other issue that came up at the Planning Commission hearing was this, the boundary of the mineral and aggregate overlay and the easy analysis that I commented on before. Essentially, the original proposal from the applicant was to put the mineral and aggregate overlay on the subject properties. Staff recommended at the Planning Commission to have the mineral and aggregate overlay on the noise compliance boundary, because that was the area where the mine would exceed, could, where the mine potentially would exceed the noise standard. But through the easy analysis, the conclusion was that there was no need to limit or prohibit uses within that noise compliance boundary, and therefore, there's really no need to put the MAO boundary on someone else's property. And so staff finds that moving forward, because of the easy analysis, that it's appropriate to put the MAO boundary on only the subject property. It's a hard one to explain. So both the Planning Commission and staff are recommending approval of all three of the applications in front of you, and that would include also the fourth item, which is not a separate application, but it would include the fourth item of changing the conditions to allow for processing on Saturdays. That is it for me.
All right. Ken had a question.
Just one, and you touched on it, but I want to be assured that if, in the process of the mining, that actually does have a negative impact on the wells where the people who are growing trees nearby somehow run out of water because of the impact of the mining, that the mining people will be making them whole with respect to their ability to continue to grow the trees. That was my only concern. I know that they've, they've set the 10-foot limit and all of that, but in spite of that, if the wells on the neighbors are negatively, significantly negatively impacted where they don't have water, is that going to be addressed? That's my primary concern.
Yes, it is, and I'm listening to you, but I was looking through the conditions of approval to identify the specific condition. And there's actually two of them. One that specifically says if water well quantity impacts attributable to the authorized mining within the impact area occurs, the operator shall rebuild to its historic level of production any well that is demonstrated to be significantly affected by the mining operations.
Very good. Thank you.
So yes, that is in there.
Okay.
Who has to prove that it contributed to the, the impact on the well?
That is a very good question. I suppose there would be a hydrogeologist involved that provides evidence of before and after.
Could we condition the approval on that if it is found that the mining operation has impacted the well, that the property owner who's doing the mining would be required to pay for the cost of the, the hydro...
Hydrologist?
Hydrologist.
I think that's a legal question.
I suppose we could. I guess I would be concerned that, you know, once we get into trying to prove up, you know, who does what, that, you know, there's some elements of, you know, private rights of action that may be in you know, who, who does what, uh, that, you know, there's some elements of, um, you know, private rights of action that may be involved there. You know, I mean, we're, we're talking about condition, land use conditions of approval here. Um, it, it seems a bit of a clumsy fit to me, uh, to start dealing with, uh, you know, evidentiary burdens on the back end. That, that's just my opinion. Uh, short answer is yes, we could put something in there. Um, I'm not quite sure how it would fit, though.
Well, let's see what the, uh, applicant says. And if there's anyone here who wants to ask that, then we'll think about it. Uh, Sonia.
So I'm curious about the, um, notice and the, um, outreach to the surrounding community. I understand that the CPO for that area is not active now according to the materials. So I'm just wondering if you can comment about how far the breadth of notices and?
Uh, notice was sent out to all property owners within 2,500 feet of the proposed site. Um, it is my understanding that the applicant also reached out to some folks in the community and had, has had, I believe now two neighborhood meetings, one prior to the planning commission meeting, and then this latest one with Warehouser and some other folks in the neighborhood.
And are, how, there's not very many residences at all around this site?
I don't know how many were, were within the 2,500 feet. There were 20 within the 1,500 feet.
Okay, so you know that. And then just to, and I understand that there are a lot of regulations because there are potential health consequences for mining due to dust or there's noise or there's different environmental impacts. But did any of the surrounding neighbors at all provide any feedback or concern or?
Uh, no, the only feedback we've heard to date is the, uh, testimony at the planning commission hearing.
Okay. And then my last question, I grew up near a gravel pit in Multnomah County. And I am just curious, what happens or what will happen or do we look at the future of what happens once the aggregate is removed? What happens to that site? Or does our regulation move in land use extend to after the aggregate is removed?
So after the aggregate is removed, in, in theory, we are supposed to take the mineral and aggregate overlay off of the property and it just becomes EFU, exclusive farm use. And anything that's allowed in that, um, underlying zone would be allowed. Um, what is proposed in the reclamation plan is essentially to fill it with water and it becomes a large sort of lake pond water feature area and do some plantings.
Okay. So it's, okay, that helps me. All right. Thank you.
Martha?
Yeah, this all seems pretty perfunctory because I've done so many of these. But the one thing I was just gonna ask about is the change to allow mining on Saturday because previous sites, they have not, and that was because noise? And why this change in this particular instance? I just wanna understand that.
Okay, um, and that's fair. So, um, state law and our zoning code both allow mining and processing Monday through Friday, certain hours and Saturday shorter hours. Um, the mining has been going on on Saturdays. Uh, phase three was approved for mining on Saturdays, but not processing. And so the processing that's happening on the east side of Barlow Road, at the time it was approved, um, in 1993 was only approved from Monday through Friday. And I quite frankly, don't know why. There was nothing in the findings that would have limited it to that, except that maybe that's just what they asked for, or they were trying to be good neighbors. Um, but there's nothing in the noise study that leads me to believe that it would cause any,
Any additional?
Any additional noise impacts to the point where it would exceed the standards.
Okay. Thank you for that.
All right. So we've gone through the questions. At this point, um, we, so we do the public hearing. No, but at this point, we let the applicant present, correct? It seemed, does this concern? Staff presentation.
The applicant's up next.
Yeah. Yeah, the applicant's presents. All right.
Good morning, Chair Bernard, members of the commission. My name's Steve Bifer. I'm a land use attorney at Perkins Coie here today with Cadman Materials on the application Martha's just been previewing, previewing with you. To my right is Andy Highland, who's the area operations manager for Cadman Materials in this area and certainly at this location. We've got a more efficient presentation, at least initially, than we put to the planning commission because there we brought up a number of our subject matter consultants on noise and other matters to talk about, the geologists who did the quantity and quality assessments. And Doug Glass from Slickter and Associates, who's the hydrogeologist, who's been addressing the groundwater conflict potential with us. Today, I'll be followed very quickly by, or shortly by Andy, who will explain Cadman, who they are, how they operate in the area and what this project will be in a little more detail. Martha's covered a lot of ground and the staff report does as much. However, we have Doug Glass here particularly for questions with regard to hydrology and potential impacts and some of the conditions. But, uh, and many people from Cadman who can discuss operations and how they deal with issues as they arise. But we did not bring some of those other consultants. So we should take about 10 minutes on the front end and then we'll turn it over to questions to you. With that, I'll turn it over to Andy now.
Good morning. Um, so I'd like to give you a, a quick overview of who we are and, and what we do. Uh, Cadman Materials is a subsidiary of an organization called Lee High Hansen. And Lee High Hansen in turn is the North American arm of Heidelberg Cement, a global building materials, uh, group. We operate a number of facilities in southwest Washington and Oregon around the Portland metropolitan area. Uh, principally four aggregates pits, one at Battleground, uh, to the north, uh, one at, um, Boardman to the east, which isn't on the, what's on the top map there. Um, we barge materials by, uh, by river into the metro area from Boardman. And then our principal aggregates facility to the south is, is Canby, uh, which we're talking about today. Uh, we're a vertically integrated business in the area, which means we, we have our own internal ready mix division. And we have four ready mix plants, again, in and around the metropolitan area, uh, two in Washington and two in Oregon. If I zoom in to, uh, this particular area, the Canby area, um, we have both a, uh, sand and gravel pit, uh, which we're talking about and Martha has, uh, very nicely outlined. Uh, we've been mining here since, uh, 1998 and we employ approximately 20 people, uh, on site. And we have a sister, uh, ready mix plant, which is just off, uh, highway 99 at the western edge of, of Canby. Um, and we employ, uh, six people there. That's been operating since approximately the same length of time. The overall summary of the proposal, and I'm, I'll, I'll skip through this pretty quickly because I'm rehashing much of what, what's been said. Um, we're looking to develop a phase four of the projects and that's a, an expansion to the southwest, uh, directly south and west of the current phase, uh, three. Um, we're also looking to, um, modify conditions to process material on Saturdays. The way that operation will run, um, we will move material in exactly the same mechanism beneath Barlow Road. There's an existing conveyor that won't change onto the processing site to the, to the east. Uh, truck traffic will be, uh, consistent, so the scope of the operations, um, won't change. And the access point for the trucks is to the east side of, uh, Barlow Road as it is currently. Uh, Martha talked about the, the reclamation plan. Um, that will be to, uh, to water. Uh, it's conceptual at the moment to be defined with, uh, Dogami and there will be some, probably some element of backfilling in the northwest, uh, of the, the phase four excavation. Uh, one additional piece, uh, which I'd like to mention, um, a bit more specifics on the community meeting. We, we mentioned that the first of these, uh, this was held in, in Barlow in, uh, in mid-November. Uh, we had approximately 13, uh, individuals, uh, turn up to that from the local community with, uh, three Cadman representatives, uh, there, including myself. Um, and the key talking points, as you'd expect, around groundwater, um, dust, lighting, noise, et cetera. So many of the, uh, the issues we've, we've talked about so far. And I think with, with that, I'll hand that back to, to you, Steve.
And the second meeting was specific to groundwater?
The second meeting was, uh, two weeks ago off the top of my head, um, with, uh, primarily with Warehouser and, um, and some of their, their neighbors at Warehouser's offices focused specifically on, uh, on groundwater and a discussion around the, uh, the conditions to, to make sure we, we look after our, our neighbors and they can continue business uninterrupted.
With that, um, Martha has covered much of the ground in an application that's not uncomplicated. Um, I also know that the board for many years now doesn't spend as much time on land use matters other than legislative. So this is one of those opportunities. But you, for all kinds of good reasons, are responsible if there's a planner's own map or text amendment involved, and that's why we're here today. What's most unusual, and I, I've been before, many of you before and summarized this, the state, uh, LCDC in 1996, addressing a number of issues, decided to adopt an administrative rule which imposed, as Martha described, a set of uniform criteria and processes on counties, every county, 36 throughout the state, for this kind of an application. It's the one instance in the Oregon land use program where the state, for better or for worse, has relieved local governments of the obligation of setting those criteria because frankly, they were different throughout the country. It was creating a whole host of problems at the time. Um, I was involved in that effort back in the 90s, 96 area and, and at the end of the day, I still remain pleased that we came as close as we did. There are glitches in this rule, but I think in my experience, having done many of these, it works pretty well. But the hallmark of it is the 1,500-foot impact area and the extent to which an applicant can demonstrate and a governing body, in this case, a board of county commissioners can confirm that certain types of conflicts which are identified in that state rule, dust, noise and other discharges, impacts to agricultural activities, um, implications for potential airport interference due to bird attractants, like settling ponds and the like, there's a handful of activities. The extent to which those conflicts with noise sensitive and other uses within that impact area have been successfully minimized to the point where they're no longer significant to that conflicted use. There are potential conflicts that have to be identified and as Martha notes, we had a series of experts who were very experienced in this and devised mitigation measures. There are noise berms, there are screening, there are groundwater monitoring requirements which are reflected in the conditions which are on pages two through six of your staff report. The new conditions that were added as a result of the meeting with Warehouser and the other commercial nurseries are bolded and red. And those are the ones that were added to increase the number of monitoring wells and to ensure that on a quarterly basis, the information from those wells is provided to all the participants in that impact area. So everybody's gonna know what's going on as this mining occurs. And from that point, at the end of the day, we'll address the question Commissioner you raised about impacts, if any. My last comment would be, in my experience, a Papa application kind of rises or falls on the extent and nature of the conditions because that's the only way anyone, including the county, can be assured that those conflict minimization measures are actually implemented. And this board knows as well as any, what an applicant says is not as important as what they're bound to through conditions of approval. And in aggregate cases, more than many, I've seen cases where we've had 100 conditions. We have 56 here. They're precise, they're very specific, and they will come back to the issue of enforcement, as Nate pointed out. I've never had that happen. To your question, Commissioner, my experience, limited as it is with groundwater impacts, is the first call goes to Dogami.
To the?
To Dogami, the state agency, the Department of Geology and Mineral Industries and the Mine Land Reclamation Program. After we're through the county, if we're approved, we next visit Dogami and DEQ. DEQ to extend our stormwater management plan on phase three, onto phase four to make sure that all storm water retained, is retained on site to the extent that it has an outfall as it does in, in the river, that it's pretreated and all the criteria are met. The key, though, is Dogami. Dogami, no matter how many approvals you have from a county, you are not allowed to mine until you have a operations plan approved by Dogami. And they have frankly, more authority than a county has. And they are much more interested in offsite impacts. And that is the one place where I have seen, not on my projects, but on others, where Dogami has investigated and been the ultimate solution of when and how a well needs to be replaced or repaired. So I can only tell you on that one, my sense is that it's a county condition, as, as Nate suggests, but the Dogami conditions, which we don't have yet, will be, um, paramount, should that come to be. Uh, the underlying use, future use question is an interesting one, Commissioner. That and one I haven't heard raised in many of these, but it's a very fair question. Of course, you saw the graphic, the upper 20 to 30% of that site up next to the highway will be an upland site at the end and the remainder of it, because of the natural groundwater, will become a lake. And I believe, Andy, three will become a lake, won't it?
Correct.
All or most?
The overwhelming majority.
So there's a large water feature in the future out there. And the timeframe for this, we're estimating at?
Phase, for phase three?
Phase four. Phase three and four.
Well, so we've, there's roughly, we mine at approximately a million tons a year. Three and a half million tons left in phase three and eight million tons in phase four. So.
So rounded up to 10, 11 years.
I'm not sure I heard that, but 10 years?
That's about three years left in phase three. And that, that point, phase four will commence and that's approximately eight to 10 years at the current rate of processing.
Correct.
If you approve more roads, the processing will go up. It'll take longer to mine that out, or shorter to mine that out. The, the question of what happens after that, other than the water feature, I think Martha's absolutely right. I haven't yet to see a county remove an overlay zone, but I think it's irrelevant that it remain because the use that's allowed under that overlay zone is subject to the approval, if granted, that you grant. That approval is conditioned by what the applicant has included in their application. We've indicated that we'll mine to a maximum depth on a portion of this site to 60 feet. If this site were mined out and we saw great demand for aggregate in the future, 10 years, 20 years after it had been closed, could it be reopened? I think the short answer there, even if the overlay zone has not been removed, is we'd have to go back and at a minimum, get a 708 site plan review. And we may have to modify the Papa because it was very specific as to the depth of our proposal. So the short answer there is I think what you see here, if it's approved, is the most you'll see whether the overlay zone remains intact or not. It'll, it'll be this and nothing more unless we go through this process again in the future. And I don't have any reason to think that that's gonna be the case. So. And with that, I think it's time for us to open up to questions that you might have of us.
Okay. Ken?
I just appreciate you addressing the water issue more than anything else. I had a, my wife and I used to live on a small horse ranch. I had a well go dry. I know what the impact is. And, um, it was pretty expensive to drill another one. And this was a case where the groundwater table just dropped over time. So that was my primary concern. You've got neighbors that have wells. I wanna make sure that one way or another, they still have water. As long as you can assure us that that is the case, I'm fine. But I do appreciate that you have addressed it, um, directly. Thank you.
And, and I would only add, Commissioner, I think that the interested parties that were at the last meeting Andy mentions, which were Warehouser and the other commercial nurseries up on the bench, which there are some significant nurseries up, up there, especially Warehouses. I think their, their approach in terms of the additional conditions they requested was, was prudent and, and appropriate. They asked for more information, number one, more wells and more frequent monitoring. The second thing they asked for is that that information be made available on a regular basis to each of them. It doesn't just go to the county and leave it to them to search for it. It's gonna go to them. So what that does, as your experience, I'm sure, would suggest, it provides the well owners out there with a steady stream of information upon which to build the argument that an impact has occurred. And that, that's something that's missing in many cases, I think. And it's being added in this one.
Thank you.
Paul?
Yeah, so, uh, on the water topic, which is my, you know, only concern on these types of applications, as always. Um, and that is, so Martha, you mentioned 10 feet and the summary says there's 20 feet listed in here. Speak to that discrepancy or not discrepancy, but difference. Um, and then, um, what is the water table? And do we have any sense of what, if there is a drawdown, is, is that seasonal, so on?
And, and we have our hydrologist here if we want, if we need to go to him. Go ahead, Martha.
So I can answer the first, but not the second. The second one might be for the hydro, the hydrologist. Um, there is about, uh, 10 feet of overburden of topsoil, of, um, earth that needs to be taken off before you get to the, to the water, the groundwater. Um, and so that would only go down and they would only de-water that for an additional 10 feet. So it's 20 feet from ground level or 10 feet from the existing water level.
Okay, okay.
Makes sense. Makes sense.
Yeah, you see both of those, the groundwater's, yeah. And we have a maximum depth of, it's tapered, we have a maximum depth of sixty feet, so that delta between twenty and sixty is going to be wet mine, which will obviously maintain the water table at that level.
I guess then my question would go to the seasonal aspects of the water table.
I'm going to have Doug Glass come up and answer this, Commissioner. You're going to get a much more accurate answer.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Doug Glass. I am the president of HG Schlicker and Associates, and I am the principal groundwater hydrologist on this project, as well as the engineering geologist. Yeah, there is some seasonal drawdown. When you observe these well, the marking wells we have out there now, in the late summer, early fall, you'll notice there's about a four-foot or more change. So there is some seasonal aspect to it.
Is it a, is the recharge rate satisfactory or in question? Has there been any testing in that regard?
As the recharge rate on?
Existing wells.
Well, I guess that, for example, if, you know, in some areas, you know, you can have a drawdown, and the recharge rate's pretty quick, and in some areas of the region, it's very, very slow, and so, you know, sometimes people are forced to drill down deeper.
I understand what you're saying, yeah. These are, this is a very high-quality aquifer, composed of gravels and sands predominantly, and the recharge rate is very high, and that is primarily because it's coming out of the Highlands to the south, and the groundwater flow direction is to the north. We're mining north of the wells of concern, so they're getting heavy recharge from the south.
So the source of the aquifer is the river to the south?
Well, it's?
We presume?
It's more precipitation up on the Highlands.
Okay. So there's no influence from any local tributaries that influence that recharge rate?
They don't have a huge impact, no.
Okay. All right, and so the average is plus or minus about four feet?
Yeah, it varies. It depends on the year. The last two years, there's been more drawdown as a result of two very dry years.
Okay. And if the need to seek more water, drilling deeper would be something that would render more water? I mean, there would be water available?
There is water available down deep. There's another aquifer down there.
Okay. Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can we make them build a marina after they're done?
I don't think that's allowed in EFU, Commissioner.
Any other questions?
No.
All right, so you guys are done, unless you want to add anything?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I will open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. Okay.
This card has two people.
Okay. So I'll ask Susan Myers and Paul Monacucco, is that right? I know the Monacucco family. Yes.
My name's Susan Myers. This is Paul Monacucco. We represent Monacucco Rentals, who own farmland to the south. Our property is west of Barlow Road, north of Lone Elder. A portion of our property is within, I think, the area of concern. Our well has been identified as one of the wells that Warehouser uses during the wintertime when they need to, for frost protection. We obviously use our well for growing vegetables, so this is a high-quality soil for vegetable growth. We are on top of the bluff, and so it's not just nursery stock, so it's water quality, water pressure, water volume that we're concerned with. And our well is fairly deep, and we're somewhat reassured that they're only mining sixty feet down, but it's still concerning, and we really appreciate Warehouser catching this and working with Cadman to develop these conditions of approval. And we've reviewed them, we, this is not our, something that we have dealt with, so we don't know what more to ask for. It seems to address our concerns. We were allowed to attend the meeting, which we really appreciated, between Warehouser and Cadman, and we appreciate the sharing of information, but there is a certain amount of, the burden is on us to prove the impact is, of their mining on our well. And, you know, it's challenging to know exactly how to do that. We know our static levels, we know our well depth, we have a fairly deep well, we think we're going to be okay, but we, the uncertainty is alarming, because we have cash crops. It's, if we're out of water, we lose a lot of money. So I say we lease our land to Monacucco Farms, so we, I don't know if, what else to say. We're not sure what else to ask for, because we will be testing our well over the coming years to seasonal, for the seasonal changes, because as there's less rainwater, and there's a lot of wells up there, we've seen our volumes change over time already, so it's not a minor thing for us, so.
All right, Paul, did you want to ask a question?
Well, actually, you kind of touched on it, you touched on the latter piece, so I just want to expand on that. So have you had a historical, in the past, have you had any issues with a lack of water or that impeded your ability to produce?
Our well is fairly deep, so we've been impacted less. A lot of the wells on the bluff are shallower, and it has been a challenge. That's why there's kind of a network of piping where we can share water between property owners, so if someone has, needs more than their well can provide, we tap into each other's water, so.
So you've managed through, you've managed through, but you already have a history of some challenges already?
Not us specifically, I don't believe.
Not our well.
But we have seen our volumes drop, you know, it's?
The water table.
Water table is dropping.
A little bit.
Warehouser actually is, you share water with Warehouser? Is that right?
They use our well when they are doing frost protection, because it requires a tremendous amount of volume. That's in the wintertime. We use our water, obviously, in the summertime.
Okay. Ken?
The previous individual, the hydrologist testified, he said there was about a four-foot fluctuation, seasonally speaking, in the water table. Does that match what your experience is, is my first question?
We need to go back and check our levels that we've tested. I can't recall that right now.
Might be worth sharing that with Cadman, so that everybody's on the same page. I was curious, how deep is your well? Do you know offhand?
I believe it's, our static level is ninety-eight, our well depth, I think, is three fifty, and our pump is around two something. So we're down, that's why, at mining at sixty feet, they're, but they're de-watering ten percent, we think we're going to be okay. That's what all the experts are saying, but it's that uncertainty of, you know, creating this massive lake that will be drawing off the natural water table.
Mine was four hundred and fifty feet, and so.
Yeah. It's expensive to have to drill a well, and it's the loss of our crop when it's happening. We don't have months to, you know, stop the process and allow it to recharge, so it's, well, we think we're fine. It's an uncomfortable situation, so.
All right, thank you, and?
Thank you.
Okay. Mark?
Good morning. I'm Mark Triebwasser, the nursery manager of the Warehouser Aurora Nursery on South Lone Elder, just south of the property. And we've all heard our concerns. We presented at the planning commission meeting, sorry, at the planning commission meeting, and expressed our concerns, and had contacted our hydrologist under contract to Warehouser, and they said the conditions were good, but we needed to have a little bit more restrictions, and so we proposed some things to Cadman. We had a meeting at Warehouser, the Monacuccos were there, where we have a leased water right to use their well during frost protection in September, October, early November. We also lease several other pieces of property where we actually grow seedlings and use the wells from the other neighbors, and they were present also. During phase three, we did have one well, which is down at the same level, pretty much as the mine operation. It's down at the bottom of the bluff, and it's a shallow well, and we did see some impact. And it did recover, we just had to stop pumping it for a little while, so it didn't impact us, but, excuse me, we were concerned that there could be future problems, and so we said if we had more information, so we wanted monthly readings, and we wanted to be able to say, hey, we need to know what the readings are, so we could say, hey, things are dropping. We could adjust the way we use our wells during the summer, so that we have the water at the critical time in the fall, where we need to protect the crops, because one couple hours below a critical temperature without frost protection, and we can lose hundreds of thousands of trees or millions of trees immediately, quickly, with no recourse. So there's no way you could correct anything at the last minute. With that?
Okay.
We don't see there's a problem. We think we were very glad that Cadman came in and talked to us. I invited all the other neighbors and people that we leased water from and the other property owner of the site, so they were sort of, okay, you've got a big group now, but I think they addressed all of the issues and were quite happy.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else? With that, I'll close public testimony, and, yes, Paul?
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, a closed public testimony, and we'll go to deliberation. Paul?
So I guess I have a question, maybe for Mr. Pfeiffer, or maybe the hydrologist And that is, my, I guess, listening to the folks here and knowing that if they suddenly have a wa, I mean, let's just say hypothetically, in an unfortunate situation, the, their water supply for their operations in the neighboring properties, the people that spoke here, is suddenly in jeopardy, or there's lack of water. It is, it's a good point. I mean, it's going to take time to drill deeper, right? There'll be a loss right there. And do we, and I, Steve, maybe it's not a fair question, or actually, to either two of you, I mean, how long does it take to actually drill deeper, get someone, get someone on site, make that happen? And that's a difficult question for you to answer, but the question is, is there any means, is there any other mitigation or measures that can be put in place now to maybe, you mentioned an off-site, or not an off-site, you mentioned that, maybe Martha did, that there would be a monitoring well. Could that well be drilled deep enough to where it actually could be a source?
The issue that we would have with that is, we'd have to get a water right on it, and that wouldn't be quick. It's much easier?
You're also monitoring upper levels.
Yeah, it's much easier to provide someone with temporary water out of a tank while we're drilling a well. We've done that twice, perhaps three times, on prior phases, where the homes were immediately, and the wells were immediately adjacent to the pit wall, and we went out and rebuilt their wells for them. Much better wells than I had than they had originally.
If somebody told you to go today, how long would it take you to have that well done?
Typically, two weeks.
Okay. But the monitoring would show, you know, there'd be, there'd be some, by the monitoring, if you monitored frequently enough, there would be a trend there, you'd say, oh my gosh, we need to do something, or not, right?
And that's the purpose of our proposed program, is that we have a bunch of monitoring wells out there, not just one, quite a number of them, and we're going to start mining at the north end of phase four and work towards the wells, and that way we can watch the drawdown with distance, you know, the drawdown burst distance, and we can see that, oh, you know, at a hundred feet, it's drawing down seven feet. At two hundred feet, it's drawing down a half a foot. And then we can project that as that mine wall moves south, we can project that simply by moving the curve, that drawdown curve, simply by moving that to the south, we can say, okay, when we get to this point, there'd be a problem, we're going to have to change something, not de-water as deep, put in an infiltration trench, do something. So that lets us know ahead of time, before there's an issue. We want to be proactive and protective of these wells.
And I appreciate that. I follow, I follow that. I'm with you. Question I really have is that the folks in the audience or the nearby properties don't have any kind of expertise here in the room today, or representation. So my question is, is the applicant, or I'll look at our staff, too, as well, is there anything in this proposal that kind of assures that that burden would be borne on the applicant and not on the locals, the local property owners?
The burden of replacement? Or the burden of monitoring?
If there's need to drill deeper, or their wells are in jeopardy, and the monitoring shows that, you've seen that, and you know there's a problem, is that, is the applicant willing to accept that burden on behalf of the neighboring properties?
In the form of the condition that Martha referred to, and I'm hoping she's looking up the number now, that's the one that says we are responsible for that. I think the question, Commissioner, there's no doubt the answer to that is yes. We accept that condition, that's fine. We actually proposed a condition similar to that. My sense here, and this is not in anything, any kind of law that I practice, but my sense is the question of who proves up the point, if there's a concern about impacts have occurred. It's that causation piece. There's a lot of things happening in the world these days, and people are, people are already seeing drawdowns from this. I've other projects where they claim climate change is a reason. I've got a wetland I didn't have yesterday. There's all kinds of issues out there. The best thing I think people can do, and from what I listen, listening to the Monacuccos, they're clearly on top of it, and I suspect the other, particularly the commercial nurseries with large volumes like Mark are definitely on top of it, is keep a database. You really have, that causation and how you prove it up, regardless of, both sides, if there were a dispute, in this case or others, are going to, are going to load up with hydrologists. There's not going to be a shortage of hydrologists in that kind of dispute. But at the end of the day, what's missing is the data that can pinpoint what the source of the problem, if it truly exists, is. And that's why if you can document on a regular basis your baseline, the changes, and everything else, you're going to have a much more compelling argument when the time comes to say, I think you, this operation, whatever the activity is, has damaged the well. They can isolate that causation. It's really data gathering, I think.
Yeah, and our data is continuous. We're going to have continuously recorded monitoring wells, so we'll have.
And your process, you're not going to extract any water, you're going to wet mine, correct?
No, we are going to, we're going to extract, we're going to skim off the upper ten feet of water.
Okay.
And then we'll be wet mining below that.
Okay.
The other thing that I've observed, and Doug can correct me, in some instances where we have a project like this, we have a lot of residential wells, which tend to be less sophisticated. They tend to be, we've had some that were hand dug, thirty feet, and yeah, they're providing water, but they're not cased, there's a series of problems there, and that raises more concerns about the impact, because the wells themselves aren't as protecting of that impact. These are serious wells that you've heard about today, is my guess.
As compared to two of the wells that we've replaced, which were two of the earliest wells ever built in Oregon, and were in the thirty to forty-foot range, and one of them was being used to do truck farm irrigation off of what was a domestic use well, but...
But a serious well like these is going to have more built-in protections.
These are different wells. They're much, they're built much better, they tend to be larger diameter, sand-packed, better screening.
Yeah, Enrak recently had Northwest Experimental, what's Enrak stand for? I'm on the board. They recently had a well that has been failing for years, and they redug that, but, and then the Stafford area had an impact to their wells, because everyone from Wilsonville was drawing out of it, and that's why they went to the Willamette River. But this area is pretty wet as it is, I mean, I drive by it fairly often, and that's why you have to take off the first ten, top ten feet of waters, there's so much water down there. It's kind of a bowl, too, and the rest of the property is up higher. Of course, that makes their wells deeper, but, anyway, Ken, you had a question?
I heard the, I don't remember your name, sir, the hydrologist? Okay. You alluded to the, being prepared to truck water in if necessary, was like... Was I, did I hear that correctly?
Yes. Yeah, we did that on.
So if push comes to shove, and you've got an emergency situation, you're prepared to truck water in to make sure that the local farmers are taken care of.
Or get a temporary use to pump from the mine itself.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right, so I'll call for a motion on Z 0406-19-CP, Z 0407-19-MAR, and Z 048-19-ZAP.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Z 0406-19-CP, Z 0407-19-MAR, and Z 0408-19-ZAP, as recommended by Planning Commission and staff.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, we approve Z 0406-19-CP, and Z 0, I mean, 407-19-MAR, and Z 0408-19-ZAP, as recommended by the Planning Commission and staff. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. We're not, we don't have to poll at this, do we? No. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. With that, it has, let me see. I've got to turn the pages, there's other stuff I'm supposed to read. Now that the request has been approved, I'll direct staff to draft an ordinance reflecting today's decision and include it on the agenda for the board's adoption at a future business meeting. With that, are we okay to close?
Yep.
I'll close the hearing on Z 0406-19-CP, Z 0407-19-MAR, and Z 0408-19-ZAP, and adjourn the meeting. Thank you.